Call to me in order for the April 26, 2022 study. Is microphone on? It's not. Call to me in order for the April 26, 2022 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Avery has an excused absence.
Thank you. Clarification for business on items related to the consent calendar. Councilman O'Neal?
None.
Councilman Duffield?
None.
Councilman Brenner?
None.
Thank you. Councilman Dixon, I'm sorry.
Just waiting for my name. I have none.
Thank you. Councilman Brenner said none. Mayor Protemblom?
I have none as well.
Okay, and I think there's some clarification on item three. Is that correct?
Yes, there's amended ordinance that we put out on item number three. And then we're going to ask that study session item number three be continued to the next meeting, or a future meeting.
Okay, great. So then we'll go to the proclamations and then on the current business. Okay.
It'd be proclamations on the housing element update.
Oh, that's correct. Okay. And do we have the players here in attendance? Okay, great. So this evening, we have a proclamation honoring the Sage Hill High School Girls Basketball State Champions. Would you like to stand? Now, we have a packed house, so I'm going to do this a little bit differently this time. First, I'll read the proclamation, and then if you would like the coach or any of you would like to come and say a couple of words, and then we'll probably push off pictures, or we may be doing really quickly. Is there anyone who would like to represent the team to come forward to the podium? Yes. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
Before I read the proclamation, do you want to say anything about a highlight of the season other than the obvious, or anything about the girls?
First of all, I would thank the City Council and Mayor for inviting us here today. This is obviously truly an honor and blessing that we're here. We've had a very amazing group of young ladies who actually put everything that they had into this season and has made some amazing strides and created a little bit of history for the local area. Our girls are passionate about being one of the best in not only the county but in the state and hopefully in the country very, very soon. We love where we are. We are proud of representing our community. We're a big community family, and we appreciate this honor, and thank you very much for having us here today.
Thank you, and we're proud to have you represent our community and doing such a fabulous job. I think that there is more to come, as you hinted at, and if you'd like, now I'll read the proclamation, and then we'll have a chance for quick pictures with the team and the council. Whereas a Sage Hill High School's girls basketball team won the CIF Southern California Regional Championship for the first time in the school's history. And whereas a Sage Hill School Girls Basketball Team won the CIF State Championship for the first time in the school's history. And whereas this is the first time a girls' basketball team from Newport Beach has won the high school state championship at any level. Whereas the Lightning Girls Basketball Team led by Coach Kerwin Walters was the only basketball team who brought a state championship to Orange County this year. Now therefore I, Kevin Muldoon, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize a Sage Hill High School Girls Basketball Team. Well, traditionally, Coach, we're all going to go up in front of the flags, take a group picture. Would you like to offer an opportunity for any of the young ladies to speak? It might be good for college applications or... Okay, well, let's all go up there and take a big picture, and then we'll move on to current business.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
There we go. Mayor, step forward. There you go.
Okay, he's first.
Okay, here we go. Right here. I'm going to do three. One, two, three. Thanks very much.
Stay right there. A little bit more. There we go. Okay. One, two, three. One more. One, two. Thank you.
Okay, we've continued the residential refuse program, so now we'll go to the update about the housing element. Steph?
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon and City Council members. I'm Simone Jurges, your Community Development Director, and with me is Deputy Director Jim Campbell. Tonight, today, we're going to want to talk to you about the, an update to our housing element. We've been talking about the housing element for the last couple of years. But before I do anything, jump into the presentation, just for everybody in the audience and people at home, you know, this is our housing element document, which you can find online, and it's a plan for the future of housing for the city, and this is all mandated by the state. So tonight, we're not talking about a project. There's no project here. The only thing we're talking about is, does the city have a plan for housing? And again, a lot of this is, all of it is really, it's mandated by the state. We are forced to plan for housing. And this time around, we're planning for an enormous amount of housing, which will include affordable housing, and the council isn't the one that's saying, we've got to do housing. It's the state mandating it, and if we don't, there are penalties. So we're not talking about a project tonight. This is where are we going to put housing? And Mr. Campbell here, in the future, is going to rezone, and then eventually, we're going to go to a vote of the electorate, and that's what we're going to be talking about today. Where's the future of housing? We've come to the council. This is our third time talking about our housing element, the comment letters. We've submitted the document to HCD. They since then submitted, sent us their comment letter, and we're getting better at this housing element. We're getting very, very close to getting certified. So again, on the screen, on the top there, you have 197 agencies in the SCAG region. SCAG is Southern California. There's about 197 cities and counties, and everybody has to do this. Of the 197, nine have been certified, and when you look at Orange County, only one has been certified. And for those nine, we have Long Beach just got certified, the County Ventura, County Imperial, and for Orange County, Yorba Linda just recently got certified. Everybody is subject to AB 1398, which we'll talk about here in a second here, to have to implement all this zoning by October, which is going to be an impossible task for us. I think one key takeaway tonight is that we are very, very close to getting certified, and we've talked to HCD. We've had conference calls with them. They're working with us and trying to help us get to that finish line, and they said, you know, we're very close, and just maybe another round of changes to this housing element. We are going to talk with the City Council about the state law Assembly Bill 1398, and how does that impact the city and how we cannot comply with that. Mr. Campbell and myself are going to kind of tag-team this presentation, so next slide here, I'm going to go ahead and have Mr. Campbell kind of go through that.
Thank you, Simone. Mayor and Council and everyone listening in, we did obviously adopt our housing element back in February, and we submitted it for its mandatory review by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. We got back a letter on April 11th. The letter is shorter than the previous letter, so the comments are, we're getting a little closer, and we had a conference call with them, and that was the big thing that we heard from them. We are, we are close. And we also distinctly heard a different tone in the comments from our reviewer. They want to help us get certified. I think they saw the numbers that Simone just recently, just showed you there with how many agencies are not certified, and I think they really feeling the pressure to get these things done. So this is just a real high-level summary. Obviously, the letter is available for everyone to see. It's located at the city's website, also at the state's website as well, but affirmatively furthering fair housing. We need to do a little bit more work here. We need to add some local data and knowledge. We need to enhance the discussion of the sites in lower resource areas. You have to remember, our housing opportunity sites are primarily located in the West Newport area, the airport area, and Newport Center, and there's other areas as well. So we need to obviously expand the narratives there and then expand any policy programs or performance measures in those areas. They want us to kind of examine our residential mixed-use areas. We established some mixed-use zones back in 2006, and not really performing, and so that's something that's a policy action that we're going to do, so we're going to explain that narrative. And then housing for the disabled was one other issue. You know, it really resolves around residential care facilities and how we do regulate those larger group home facilities.
So I'm going to take this slide, and when Mr. Campbell talked about item three there, housing for the disabled, the residential care facilities. So, you know, right now, currently, we have a council subcommittee made up of Councilmember Joy Brenner, Diane Dixon, and Duffy Duffield. We're working on our residential care facility ordinance. We're tightening it up. Unfortunately, HCD is looking at us and saying, well, you have these requirements, what we say, we call neighborhood character, and we, and HCD believes it's an impediment to housing. We disagree with them, and so our neighborhood character provision is, you know, the, these are care facilities of seven or more occupants, which we can permit. Anything six or less, the state permits. So this is only where, this is the only area where we can actually issue a permit for residential care facility. And it talks about, you know, our code talks about the proximity to parks and schools, you know, how many parking spaces? What's your lot width? The concentration, do you have one on the block or do you have two on the block? And then that distancing between those facilities. Our subcommittee has been working really hard to change our ordinance and kind of updating it. We have a very good ordinance. We're going to update it. Costa Mesa has a strong ordinance. We're going to kind of mimic what they have there. What we have to deal with, unfortunately, is we have to deal with HCD. We're not, staff is not advocating removing any of these items. We feel that there's going to be some type of, I want to say middle ground, but we need to educate HCD further. We've talked to our partners at City of Costa Mesa. They're going through this exact same thing. They're not going to change their ordinance over it, and we're going to be talking to our partners in Huntington Beach and kind of maybe teaming up all of us to talk to HCD. I think what we can commit to as a policy is that we're going to review these items and come up maybe with more objective standards, right? Maybe more of that distancing requirements, more of that concentration requirements. I think if it's something objective, then I think it could work for HCD. And again, it's just a policy. It's a promise to study this. HCD wants us to remove this, and we're not going to remove that. We're not going to advocate removal. We're just going to continue to work with them. So any questions on this area? All right. I know, it's, this is, this is a big challenge for us. We're going to work through it, and we feel confident we're going to find a solution.
Okay, I'm going to go over a couple of changes here before we get into the process of editing this and what the next steps will be. So we do have some additional requests. It takes different opportunity sites out of the housing element, but also to add a few and then to reduce a few. So on the table here, it's a summary of the requests that we've received recently. We want to just make sure we're fully transparent here and showing what it is that the property owners are doing. Again, we're implementing council's previous direction. If council, if the property owners want to be in the housing element, we would consider it and put them in if appropriate, and if they want to be pulled out, we would do the same thing. And so I can, I'm going to highlight a couple of these sites here for you. Golf Realty Fund, this is the Newport Beach Tennis Club and the golf course. So the property owner wants to remove and reduce some of the housing units there. So over at the tennis club site, they want to reduce the units by 225. They also want us to consider adding units at the golf course maintenance facility, about 36 there, and about 42 units up along kind of the northern perimeter of the golf course, along Santa Barbara Drive, near the Meridian condominiums over there.
And let me just add to what Mr. Campbell's saying. So, you know, we know this is a kind of contentious site. You have a 50-50 ownership. Mr. O'Hill is processing entitlements for bungalows on the site. We recognize Mr. O'Hill as a managing member, and so if he wants that us to reduce it, council's direction to staff was recognize the property owner or at least the managing member. And so we understand this is a very difficult site for a lot of people, but this is what Mr. O'Hill submitted to us, and this is what we're going to go ahead and follow through with.
Okay, moving on, real quick, the net reduction here in housing units would be the reduction of 147 units. Moving on, Newport Center, we did get a request from the managing member of an LLC, and this is the big Newport area, and they would like to be removed from the housing element. That would be a loss of 165 units. Bay Shore's Apartments, so the property owner has made a request to increase the density. There's basically 39 apartments, and they want to increase it to 156, and that the net would be an added 117 units. Moving ahead, the police station site, you know, we are in discussions and maybe potentially in the future relocating the police station site, but we want to add this to the list, and with the density assumptions in Newport Center, it would net about 199 units. So those are the highlights. There's a couple of the sites on there, and we can show those if you like, but they're much smaller. Want to move on and talk about AB 1398, as was referenced early in the presentation. This is state law, basically the penalty. If we don't have a compliant housing element by February 11th of this year, we're subject to AB 1398, and the letter that we received earlier this month indicates that we are subject to that. Clearly, we don't have a compliant housing element at this point in time. And the penalty, you know, we have to rezone all of the areas that we discussed, the sites that I showed here, as well as the entire inventory that's in the housing element. We would have to complete this process by October of 2022, and we can't meet this deadline, so we will fall out of compliance with AB 1398. The primary reason is we got to complete that EIR. We've got to complete the general plan amendment that goes along with this. Then we have to develop the zones and the overlay zones for this, and then we also have to go to a vote of the electorate pursuant to the charter. So what's next? We're going to work very diligently with HCD directly, staff to staff. They've advised us and already consented to several technical advisory calls, where we're basically going to go in and show them the language that we want to put in here, and we want to get the feedback directly from them. So we're going to have that kind of iterative back-and-forth process, and then when we have a final draft where they kind of represent to us, the hope that it is complete, we'll go ahead and publish it for public review for seven days, and then we will submit it to HCD for official review and comment. The hope would be is that they would send us a letter shortly during the summer, hopefully less than 60 days, but they would have up to 60 days. And then the hope is, is that we'll have a letter of certification, and so what we'll end up doing there is then bringing the final document back to the City Council in August for its final adoption, and will be completed with the housing element update process. Implementation of the housing element obviously will take additional time. And so that project timeline is really starting now, obviously with the housing element indicated. Well, let me, let me back up here. So what I want to try to get into right now is the general plan update process, because these are different elements of our general plan, and it fits within that broader comprehensive update of our general plan. So the housing element, we hope to have adopted here with you and certified by the state and have it wrapped up in August. The circulation element is in draft form right now, and that's coming forward. We'll be bringing that to the City Council in September. We'll be having, obviously, a public hearing with the Planning Commission before that. We'll be taking additional public comment. So these are the refreshed policies for the circulation element. So after the housing element, what we'll be doing is working with our general plan update steering committee that the City Council had created at the last meeting, and then we'll be focusing on that land use element and the zoning, with the goal of presenting this to the electorate in March of 2024. So all the housing increases and traffic, all that whole ballot initiative will be then placed on the ballot. We'll be doing that environmental impact report as well, so we'll understand, and then the public will have an opportunity to comment and provide input on the impacts of all the housing that we're discussing. One of the critical points I want to stress on this is that, you know, we talked a little bit about the sites coming and going from the housing element list, these opportunity sites. What we desperately need is a stable project description, and what I mean by that is, is that the list of housing opportunity sites really just needs to be completed and finished, and we can't add, and we can't take things away. And the purpose is, is that we have to conduct the environmental analysis and the traffic analysis for all of those housing opportunity sites, so we can't be, we can't add things as we go forward, so we can't just continually change it. So once we get to that point here within the next month or two, then we're going to complete the EIR and then set this up for the public review and then adoption in 2023 with that vote in 2024.
Yeah, actually, I see Councilman O'Neal on the queue first. Let me go to him first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Councilman O'Neal.
I didn't see it.
Yeah, I was actually going to ask about the Santa Barbara site, the police station site. The police station site includes the fire station, and I'd assume we'd be keeping the fire station.
That's correct.
Do we, can we add 100? Are you looking at 199 only on the part that has the police station?
That's correct.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, I'll have more questions about timeline, but I'm good for now.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Yours, Jim, what you just said is we cannot make any more changes. So you're saying, I mean, after we get through this approval process? So if there is a property owner that, after this list that we discussed today, wanted to add more, would that be possible?
Well, we wouldn't want to, we can't add any sites once the council adopts this in August. Preferably, we want to start that EIR before that, and so I think the window of opportunity to get on the list or off the list is really going to close this summer very quickly.
Okay, so just understanding process. So for all intents and purposes, then, that is, those, the housing element would be contained in the general plan update, and then that all would go before a vote of the people at some point in time, correct?
Yeah, the vote and the ballot initiative would be the increases in housing units and the AM and PM traffic increases. That's what really the, what green light requires us to review. It's not the actual plan, but the housing and the traffic related to it.
Okay, so everything would be frozen essentially. I mean, no, there's no such thing as a general plan amendment, because nothing can change until that goes through the green light process.
Yes, I would say that's entirely correct. We need to do the EIR. We need to do the traffic modeling. We need to do the entire impact analysis, and so the project description, the number of sites where they are and the number of units, needs to be static and not change as we go through, and so we can't change it after the council adopts it. So we have a window here over the next month or two to consider additional sites, but beyond that...
Well, and that's fine. I'm just edifying for public consumption that, for all intents and purposes, once this has been approved in August, until there's a vote in March of 2024?
Be 2024, yes.
So that's 18 months hence. There's no amendment to the housing element of the general plan. So if someone wants to come in and wants an amendment, how will that be treated?
Well, they wouldn't be precluded from filing that application. So what would happen is we're doing an EIR for the housing element, for all the housing units that are contained in the housing element. We're examining the impacts of that. If somebody wants to come in after the fact and wants to file an application, they have the right to file for it, and we will examine that on its own merits, and we will conduct environmental review in kind of a cumulative analysis with all the other housing elements. So it wouldn't preclude a property owner from coming forward on their own separately from our effort here.
Well, then, if it's a general plan amendment, this is a planning commission and the City Council ultimately get involved, then there'd be a vote.
Yes.
I'm just trying to understand how this all fits together.
Certainly. The planning commission and the City Council would definitely play a role. Those are legislative actions that would have to come to the City Council. We would have to do environmental review, and depending upon the magnitude of the amendment, it might require a vote on its own, because remember, the green light thresholds are 100 traffic, 100 units, or 100 traffic trips in the AM or PM. We also have to consider prior amendments in the last 10 years, and so those thresholds are reduced. So all of, all of the existing regulations in the charter would comply, would apply.
Your folks are going to be busy. It's going to be a little bit complicated. All right, thank you very much.
Any more slides you have? Okay, great. Go ahead.
Yeah, really quick to wrap up. And so again, we've talked about the land use element and the zoning overlays, you know, those zoning actions that are contained in the housing element to establish those housing opportunities. They come in a variety of fashion, zoning overlays, specific plans, whatever they may be. All of that would get all completed prior to that vote of the electorate and then the vote of the electorate. If favorable, then those amendments would all take effect. Again, then from there, we'll be continuing to work on the comprehensive general plan update. We have all the other elements to work on, the safety element, recreation element, the noise element, and all of those items. The hope is to wrap those up and get them to the City Council for approval and adoption in 2024.
Yes.
Okay, so the land use element, the green light vote, which continues under our charter, so that would presumably be March 2024. Do you have Plan A and Plan B if it is approved by the voters, or if it's not approved? If it's not approved, what happens?
Well, if it's not approved, that's where we're in definitely in uncharted territory, because, you know, right now in the housing element, we speak to possibly amending the plan and then going back to the voters. That may or may not prove fruitful. We may need to seek judicial review of the actions, but at the end of the day, we're going to have to have a housing element that's compliant with state law despite what the voters might say. And so how this gets resolved, if it's not a favorable vote, is just uncertain at this time.
One other question. If we're waiting for that vote, we have the vote, and we're not in compliance, are we going to be fined during that period of time?
Potentially. We just don't know. The State Housing Community Development has a new enforcement group, and they do talk aggressively. I think if we are diligently pursuing all of these policy initiatives that are in our housing element that were certified by the state and we're continuing to move forward, I think they'll hopefully see the logic of it and be reasonable and not fine us, but we can't predict exactly what they're going to do.
This is why I think it's so important that we don't include projects that are too controversial, because then the vote will fail, and I'm afraid a court will just throw out our green lights. I have some questions, but first you, Ms. Brenner?
I just had one question. I know we have to proceed as if we are compelled to do this, so we don't want to get to the point where we're being fined, but I was reading the auditor's report to HCD about this process, and they were very critical, and they sent that to the legislature and indicated that they thought the process and their methodology was, was really suspect. Do you think there might be any chance that we could get relief through that?
You know, I'm hopeful, but I'm not going to hang my hat on any type of relief from the auditor's report. I think what they'll do is like, okay, well, here's where we're deficient. We're just going to go ahead and fix these items for the future, but it's not going to benefit us. It's just going to benefit maybe some, the equations or the analysis that they use to develop the kind of the housing models as we go forward, but I just don't think it's going to help us today.
Is there anything that you think we could do as far as pressuring the legislature or reaching out to the legislature and targeting this report and say why we think they really need to look at this more seriously?
I think when anybody comes up with ideas of what we can do, and I say, yes, I mean, all of the above, if we put all their thoughts and ideas on a whiteboard, I say, yeah, let's, let's try to do them all. It's, it's trying to get the legislature vote to be more supportive of cities is the real impossible task. And so I just, we could put a huge amount of resources into this, but so far, what we've done already hasn't been fruitful yet. Trying to stay optimistic, though.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protemblom?
Thank you. So I love seeing how many people showed up for this. That's great. I think this is actually the most people we've ever had for a housing review. I like that you're cheering me on. You might not actually like what I have to say about it, but I'll take the cheers initially. I think there's an important thing to remember when we're talking about what we're doing here, is that nobody, none of us in the city of Newport Beach, want to start adding more housing into the city. Okay? It's a great place to start, and it's important for us to realize. Give me a moment here, real quick. Because you might not actually like what I'm about to say, but.
If you could, please hold your applause. You can shake your fist or raise your hands, whatever you like, but I respect your request that you showed to quorum during the hearing.
And I think it's important to recognize this fact, that this is not about today, tomorrow, or the next couple of years. This is about what we have to look at, at the future of Newport Beach and how it might develop from a long-term perspective that the state is pushing down on us. And so as, as different people that own properties throughout this city are looking at what the potential of their properties are in 10 years or 15 years or longer, any of you that are out there that have gone through an entitlement process in the city know it's difficult, especially if you're trying to change a use, especially if you're trying to build something on it, and especially if it's a building that maybe needs to be changed with maybe a more forward-thinking venture with it. And so I know we're all here for the tennis club because we love it so much. And that's wonderful. I think recreation and our parks and the services and our lifestyle are huge for what we do in Newport. I mean, we're all part of it. You know, if you were trying to rip down Pelican Hills Golf Course right now, I would be burning things outside. It's just not going to happen. The idea, though, is that we have to imagine beyond that, that this isn't about taking down a racquetball court or a pickleball court, which, I'm sorry, I realize it's pickleball. I've never played, I'm sorry. But I want you to think about what we built before. And when you look at things like the Balboa Bay Club and you say, maybe, maybe we have a club that's built with a residence around tennis courts, around pickleball courts, maybe we add condos around it so that the members have a place to stay. The people have spoken, okay? It's been removed from what staff has brought forth. Okay, I get it. But I want you to remember that this isn't about ripping down a tennis club and building wall-to-wall apartments. It's about the opportunity in the future that you might be able to do something you can't do now. And I think that's the important thing to remember, is that nobody has any project or plan on the docket to rip anything down. We don't. Newport doesn't want that. The argument here has nothing to do with any of this. It has to do with what can we build in the future and how hard is it going to be? Because ripping down a building in this city is really, really, really difficult. I'm trying to do one on Balboa Island right now, it's taking a little bit of time. The idea is that we're trying to make the process easier for people that are willing to make that process happen. And it doesn't mean that we want to start scraping land and doing high-density projects. This is not something that fits into our deal. And so every single person up on this dais feels the same way. They want to do what the people think. But we also are trying to figure out how we can satiate the state of California as well. And that's not necessarily how the city of Newport Beach always thinks. And so it's great to see that everyone's out here, that they want to protect what our city is, want to protect our tennis courts and our pickleball courts, and that's wonderful. But I just want everyone in the audience to be aware that no one's trying to rip anything down right now. We're trying to prepare for the future with a possibility of where we can put things that we're forced to do. We are not builders. We're not up here to rip things down and build stuff. This is strictly for property ownership. And I think it's really important to remember that, that we all want it better. Nobody wants to get rid of our leisure activities, no one wants to get rid of our clubs, we just don't. And so I think it's important, staff's already taken a huge amount of what you guys have asked and made those changes. So before we get into a crazy line of people telling us that we don't want this, just know, they've already taken everything that you've said, and they've made those changes. Okay? They've adjusted them. So I appreciate everyone here. This is, this is one of the worst things we do up here, because we do not want to build more things in Newport. We just really don't. We just want to make the city better, and state of California is making it really, really hard for us right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman O'Neil.
Yeah, so we've, we've been doing this now for over two years, going through the regional housing needs assessment process to try to find a housing element that would comply with the state mandates. And so some of you may have read about regional housing needs assessments, and some of you may have a decent understanding of where we are on this, on this process. And some of you might, this might be the first time you're kind of hearing about it. And for you, sorry, this is really complicated. But generally speaking, we have a general plan here in the city. We have, it has a number of elements. One of them is the housing element. The housing element only identifies where sites could potentially be for housing. And then we, in order for us to even implement that housing element, we need to update the land use element, because we have something in our charter called green light that would, will require a vote of the people. So this timeline that you're looking at right now, before projects could be submitted that would come, that would go in with this, we'd first have to go to a vote of the people, which will be very challenging even with or without a project discussing pickleball or tennis courts. And so it's probably worth understanding, I'm not sure, I haven't seen anything in writing, so I'm not sure what folks have been told about what this meeting is or is not. We don't have a project in front of us tonight to approve or not approve. We're working through a housing element that will eventually be submitted in August to the Housing and Community Development Department that will eventually cause us to need to redo our zone, our land use element, which will require a lot of zoning code changes, which will then require a vote of the people. So we have a long process here, a long ways off, before you start seeing large-scale projects being submitted to us that would otherwise require a green light. I think it's probably worth your understanding that, just because we've been living this for over two years, but that doesn't mean that you've been paying any attention to this at all, which I totally understand, because when you start getting into acronyms like SCAG and RENA and HCD, it starts glazing over, and I appreciate that. But this is really important, because right now in our, in our city, we have around 45,000 housing units, which have been built over about 100 years. Over the next eight years, California's told us we need to plan for over 4,800 more. That's what we're dealing with. And of those 4,800, about three-quarters of them need to be affordable, about a quarter of them need to be very low income, about another quarter, it's, this is rough numbers, about another quarter need to be low and then moderate. And so that's why we've been working on this for over two years. So we've submitted now, this is, we submitted three times to HCD, two drafts and a submission. The submission was rejected. That's what we're talking about right now, is how to get into a compliant housing element, because if we fail on that front, we'll end up in a situation where we can either be fined or actually there, another remedy is that the state of California could sue and put a receiver in to essentially do what Simone does and take over our housing department, our planning department and start issuing permits. That obviously is what we're trying to avoid as well. So as we're moving through this process, just, just know, it's, this has been really, really complicated for a long time. All right, I'm going to say real quick, because I'm guessing there are some people representing both sides of the ownership dispute on the tennis court thing. One of the things I'd like to hear during public comment is trying to understand, as part of this process, I mean, you know, we have one group saying, leave in more units, one saying, take out some, but everybody's saying, leave some in. So, I mean, we're not adopting this until August anyway. So can't, I'm wondering on both sides, do you have the ability to reach an agreement before August so that we're not trying to weigh in on who the right owner is to make this decision? It seems like that would be a better idea to find out from a judge or an arbitrator. Anyway, that's, that's it. Thanks.
Thanks. Okay, a couple of questions, staff. You said the tone is changing, correct?
Yeah, the tone of our reviewer is, is trying to be helpful, and they've offered technical assistance sessions, and we're going to take full advantage of that. And so we hope to have all the edits that we need done before we submit it, so that we get this next draft certified with only one more submission, and then bring it back for adoption.
So your feeling is that they're going to approve this submission?
We're going to work very, very hard to make it so.
Yeah, I won't hold you to it, but that's your, that's your feeling.
Yes.
On page six, you have a property owner request. So there's a net increase of 383 over the prior submission, is that correct?
Yes.
And so basically, these are property owners who speak for the, for the land, and they are telling you, hey, while you're still open for submissions, please accept these requests for potential planning. We decided to not put the fire station in here, even though that's a possibility, correct? We could put it in there just to give it more numbers.
So, so we have the combo police and fire station.
Okay, so they're both in there.
They're both in there, but we're not looking to remove the fire station. The police station is scheduled for replacement in 10 years out. But that's the entire parcel, that's, that's the only reason why we put that like that.
Okay, great. So those in the audience, so they understand, we essentially opened it up for anyone who speaks for the property owner, to submit a plan for potential units could be put on these sites. Some will require votes and some will require zone change, and so it's not necessarily that they're going to be built, it's that we planned for them to be built. And the state actually is kind of admitting that they can't control what actually gets built, because we still have property rights in this country, probably to their chagrin. So because of that, we hope that the market will decide what actually gets built, and that those items that are actually built will be items that are pleasing to the residents. But for the most part, we're not micromanaging who comes to us and who submits a plan to us. We are, it's almost like an open RFP, if you will. So before we go out to the public, because I think many of you are here for a specific project, I see here the property owner's request. I am in support of this exact submission. Simone, you probably want to see from us a straw or supportive of who supports this as submitted, now to go to the state?
For me, it is, this is the plan. If the council wants us to go a different way, then love to hear that feedback, but I don't need a straw, for me, I don't need a straw poll. This is what you already directed us to do.
So I am going to just offer one for those in the, in the audience. I support this, that you see right here, this plan as drafted, doesn't involve our interference, we're not cherry picking properties, properties are coming to us, and I understand there's one very controversial property in this, and I'm accepting this as is. If anyone else wants to state that before the public comment goes, they're welcome to. And Councilwoman Dixon.
I'll make it very simple. I support these as well. These have been over the process of the last, how long period of time since the last time we had some public comment on this? Maybe this is April, so it may have been February, that these have been coming in since February.
Yeah, correct.
And so just to explain, just continue to explain the process. So as we've had these public discussions at the city council level, the awareness throughout the community and the property, landowners in the community have become aware of, it may be beneficial to seize the moment and avoid going through a lengthy general plan process and incorporate these changes, these zoning changes into some future development or not. And so you have a remove of the Newport Center Drive property and then a reduce on the Coast Highway. All the other ones in green signify that property owners are willing to make the zoning change and build residential housing, either affordable or market rate or somewhere in between. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And then this is, just to clarify for the public, it's over and above what staff had initially recommended, and so these are adjustments to a very complex, to achieve 4,800 units required by the state. So here we are, giving, adding more, subtracting a few, and we will be submitting this to HCD, Housing and Community Development. And frankly, I'm pleased that this is all there is. And I'm pleased that the property owners have come forward with additions and helping us reconcile where some have been reduced and where some have added, and we end up in a very good place.
Right.
All right, so I'm supportive, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, so some of my colleagues might not have their minds made up yet, or they didn't want to indicate how they feel, so please come forward and articulate your opinion respectfully, request, since we have a large crowd. And speakers, this is time for public comment. Please come forward. Actually, yeah, oh, thank you, sorry. If you intend on speaking, you can go ahead and start lining up now if you'd like.
Mayor Muldoon, City Council. It's great to be here in this beautiful building. I'm Robert O'Hill, one upper Newport Plaza, Newport Beach. Spent 30 years taking the golf property and the tennis property to the entitlements that we have now, which include a coastal permit, includes four plan checks for the new tennis clubhouse and fitness center and spa, same with the villas. Last summer, and the little hotel, 41 units now, bungalows and fitness, we had the support of the tennis members, the golf members, Granville. It's been a long process, and my co-owners, until I inherited some new ones. So bottom line is that last summer, I learned, matter of fact, it was probably early fall, I learned from people that were contacted by Debbie Allen, that my co-owners had submitted a request to the city to include the property where the tennis club is in the RENA numbers, 350 RENA numbers. So I was surprised that I'm the managing owner, and they don't have the legal authority to do that, and they did it without my knowledge or consent. And of course, it made the tennis members and the golf members crazy. They quickly started circulating petitions and letting their shock being conveyed to me in telephone calls and emails. So I have worked to try and transfer most of those units to another spot. I recognize the whole RENA problem that the city has. So I worked with Corey Kramer, Eagle Four. We found some locations, the kind of an extension off of Santa Barbara Avenue, it's being shown up there now, and a couple of other spots. So that in the end, with the wonderful work of staff, they've come before you with 383 more units and a plan that the tennis members and pickleball members, the golf members can live with. So we're full speed ahead for Plan B. We got the site improvement plans through three or four plan checks. And I really think that it's insightful that Mayor Muldoon said that if we include controversial project, it's going to make it harder to get this passed through green light. And Will O'Neal, I have sent five letters and numerous requests for my co-owners to meet. They refuse. If you can please help me get that meeting scheduled, if you would attend the meeting and act as an arbitrator, we would be eternally grateful, and so would all these people that are here tonight. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay. Please, please hold your applause. It just makes for a smoother meeting. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you. Mr. Hill, if we have any questions, we'll call you back up. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and respected councilmen. My name is Sean Abdali, and I'm the operator and owner of Grand St. Tennis, the tennis club at Newport Beach, which is now tennis and pickleball. Very honored, as you can see, with just a portion, a fraction of our membership being here. A lot of things you addressed, and Mr. Bloom, thank you very much for clarifying, and we are really pleased, Mr. O'Neal, that a lot of these things that were in question are now off the calendar or, and that makes us really happy, because that means our voice means something. And that's why we are so pleased to have people like you making decisions for us in this wonderful city. We are definitely opposed to the dense wall of apartments that was, that was proposed before. And I'd like to just make a comment that as much as we have to get ready for the future and have more units, you cannot discount the portion of health and wellness that our community needs. Today, there's more suicides with children and also in adults. And the game of pickleball has saved many lives. I can share with you personal emails, notes, and even have many of our members come speak with you about their experience. I have two little children, and this tennis club will save them from potentially drugs and alcohol that's been really harmful for many of our community members and friends' kids that I'm sure many of us know. So please help us save this cherished club, and we are 100% supportive of the managing owner's plans of the bungalows, which will help our events and our pickleball, preserve our cherished club that can be a historic landmark, more than 50 years in existence. club that can be a historic landmark, more than 50 years in existence. And we are really appreciative to all of our co-owners to give some property to serve your needs because we know how much pressure that you're under. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. Oh, excuse me. And we also have 2,611 petitions that are certified and verified, which I have for you, and I would just need to know who to leave it with. Thank you.
Thank you. The city attorney will grab them. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. Uh, first, for those who have not been following this closely, I thought the presentation was not totally transparent because seeing a number being subtracted doesn't mean much unless you know what the number is being subtracted from. I believe Mr. O'Hill said the original proposal was 350, but I looked at the draft currently posted on the city website, and the current proposal is 379 units. And if I subtract 225, I'm left with 154. And that would be an allotment for residential units. This is a mixed-use property, so the development eventually could involve things that are not residential units as well as those 154. So I, I'm not being insider, don't know totally what the plan is that might be proposed. Uh, the main comment I wanted to make, though, is totally unrelated to that. We have heard about this new penalty that the state has imposed where if a city does not have its housing element certified by a time that's already passed, Newport Beach and many, many other Southern California agencies are going to have to complete their zoning by October 15th of this year. I understand that, but I understand in the past, we have been told there was an older rule or penalty that if you didn't have a compliant housing element, a city went from an eight-year cycle to a four-year cycle. So I am wondering if that older rule still applies as well as this new one? And if the event that causes us, triggers us going from an eight-year to a four-year cycle has happened, are we in all those other cities now on a four-year cycle? Or is there some later event that triggers that? If so, what is that later event? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Charles Klob. Like the folks before me, I support the staff recommendation. Thank you. It may interest this council, and I know it will interest the audience to know, that the Costa Mesa and San Diego-based property owners who want to build apartments here are some of the largest donors to Mr. O'Neal's Elect Our Mayor campaign. One must wonder what they hope to gain by having a directly elected mayor over our longstanding council manager form of government. Thank you for your service.
No, 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 none of that. That's, we're showing decorum here, okay? This is a place of mutual respect. Yes, next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Cynthia Bukara. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I, I understand and sympathize with the enormous challenge that you have in finding these housing units. Basically, what I want to do tonight is highlight some of the elements that might not be part of the housing, but are really important and foundational for the city. Because I believe that the strength of a city is based on, or the strength of any community is based on the, the quality of life of the people that live, work, and play there. And one of the things about the pickleball club is it's not just a club where people just spend their leisure time. It actually provides many of the concepts that are called blue zone concepts, that increase the life and longevity of all the people that are participating. And just, um, a, a blue zone is an area in the world where people live, uh, in a higher percentage over 100 years. And they, when they done research on it, what they find is there are nine factors. And organically and naturally, this pickleball community and the tennis community provide that. So those, those factors include exercise, which is outdoors. We were able to do this in COVID. It provides stress relief. We know that play is not only important for children, but it's important for the brains of adults. It also provides stress relief. It also provides purpose. All of these factors are really important for the people that are involved in that community that, that use these services. And so each and every day, uh, as well as the diet, you know, they are all facilitated at this, at this particular facility. The other thing I want to point out is that there is no Plan B for the pickleball. Now, it is the fastest growing sport in the United States, but there are no other facilities like this in California, except out in the desert. And if this were, if you were to adopt the more housing in favor of this proposal, that means that the hundreds and hundreds of people that use these facilities do not have anywhere else to go. The other pickleball facilities are currently past capacity. It takes forever to be able to get a court and even play there. So you're taking the, the hundreds of people whose lives are impacted in those longevity factors and eliminating that from them. And there, in fact, across the country, there are cities that are implementing these nine factors in their cities. And what they're finding is obesity and mortality go down and the quality of life and lifespan go up. So for all these reasons, and for all of us who use these facilities, I strongly encourage that you look not only at the housing, which I know is tough for you, but also look at all the other ancillary things that this proposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And thank you for doing, doing that rather than clapping. Yes.
Thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak. I'm Darcy Bozias, and I moved to Chicago to Newport Beach in January of 2020 to be with my boyfriend. And he unexpectedly died three weeks after I arrived. I knew no one else in Newport Beach, and then the pandemic hit and the lockdown occurred. I found myself in a new town grieving, not knowing anyone, and virtually having nothing to do. It was a very tough time. But then I joined the tennis and pickleball club. I share this with you today because my life literally changed the moment I became a member of the club, and it has continued to change on a weekly basis. The club is so much more than a place with green courts where you hit a plastic ball with a paddle. Yes, we play pickleball, but we eat together, we do birthdays together, we go to physical therapy together, we laugh together. We are doing life together at the club. And for many of us in our 40s and 50s and 60s and 70s, it's an incredible gift to have this opportunity to share all of these experiences with one another. Words seem inadequate to express what this club means to its members. But I know I speak for everyone here, and I do so because I call each and every person sitting behind me a friend. This is a special place. It has been sprinkled with magic dust. It's a place where lives have been enhanced through friendships and athleticism. Every member has a personal story of what this club has done for them, how it's impacted them, and how it's changed their lives. We literally can't imagine this club no longer existing. Many of us are at the club four, five, six days a week. And this is why these people are here today. And we are also representing all of those unable to attend but share this sentiment. We love this club. We need this club. And we collectively and respectfully ask that the council accept, as you move forward, the reasonable proposal regarding this land issue, so the club can remain the joyful playground for so many people within this Newport community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And we'll try to keep, uh, applause down if possible. Thank you.
My name's Charlotte Seda. Some of my friends have already taken some of my items I was going to talk about. So I'm just going to add one more element. I'm very involved in the day-to-day operations at the club, and I'm very proud of what we've built together. The tennis and pickleball club at Newport Beach now has a reputation in the pickleball world as one of the, if not the, best places to play pickleball in the country. We're very proud of that. We host major tournaments that attract players and spectators from all over the world. Players and spectators who will stay in Newport Beach hotels and eat in Newport Beach restaurants. We're proud of that component. And I applaud you on your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Please come forward. And if you have plans to speak on this item, you could start forming a line at the podiums if, if you'd like.
I'll be brief. My name is Bernard. I moved from Paris, not from Chicago, my friend. 30 years ago, my wife is American. This, uh, club is essential to us. Essential. You would not consider touching hope. Like you, I visit my doctor every year. My doctors say, Bernard, there is nothing more important that you exercise. Your exercise is your lifeblood. We don't exercise, we die. I will be, we don't exercise, we die. And where are we going if we don't have the club? Anaheim? I mean, please. I don't want to, uh, uh, I, I don't think you realize, this is not a, a club to socialize or even to drink. Would love to have a glass of wine sometimes. But this is not essential. The essential is my, what my doctors say. You don't exercise, you die. And where are we going to exercise? Thank you for your consideration.
All right. What's in Anaheim? Disneyland? I didn't quite. Next speaker, please. Please come forward.
Hi, council. My name is Dirk Larson, and, uh, boy, this is such a complex issue that I'll try to, uh, incorporate a little humor here. Uh, little did I know at the age of 60, I would join a cult. And unfortunately, that's what this is. If you guys could all raise your paddles, please. See, they are even acting like a cult. I appreciate Mayor Pro Tim Noah admiring how much of a crowd is here, because I need you folks to be aware that with cults, Tuesday is a very big recruitment night, and three quarters of our pickleball club right now are outside Terminal 3 at John Wayne Airport, banging tambourines, burning incense, waving paddles, and recruiting more. So we are, we'll be coming in a wave as this project goes on. I think the other reason I can tell you that we are a, a cult is so many of us are well past our athletic superior years, but somehow we're managing to incorporate these Jedi tricks on our bodies and go out on those pickleball courts and act like teenagers. The thing that concerns me the most, as if the pickleball courts went away, is the number of foreclosures, bankruptcies that would go with these physical therapists and orthopedic surgeons that we hardly support and, and, and finance right now. We realize we're social outcasts to our friends, our families, even our pets have distanced themselves from us. We've had interventions in the middle of ladders on Saturday mornings. But this is, this is something very special. And we just hope that by this whole group that showed up tonight, perhaps you folks realize that, uh, this is just far beyond just some club. And lastly, I'd like to say, because we all have to in life get back to the ideas of compromise. And it's going to take compromise on everyone's behalf. We've got the governor nipping at our heels. We've got some, uh, heirs that inherited a very valuable piece of property. They want their due. We've got the pickleball members, and we have our general member. But I would like to say in closing to Mr. O'Neal, as our general member said, if we could just, and I saw the attorney, here he is right here, the gentleman for the other side, we invite your clients, come down and see what we've created. You might become hooked. We might even name a path, or we may even name a court after your clients. But let's get the sides together and let's find some compromise. And I think what the general partner has offered is indeed compromise. Let's start with that and see if we can't make this a win-win for all parties. Thank you.
Thank you. I ask that speakers please address the council. Thank you so much.
My fault.
No, no problem. Next speaker, please.
Yes, good evening. Uh, thank you very much for this opportunity to address you this evening. I mean, a number of the points have been made, so I don't mean to waste your time by going after them again. But I think there are a couple that it might be worth adding. No surprise that, uh, pickleball, I should sorry, have introduced myself, Michelle Jordan. I'm a 20-year, uh, resident of Newport Beach, and I'm one of the very early members, probably three years of the pickleball, uh, club. Having said that, no surprise that pickleball is now America's fastest-growing sport, and it is attracting major interests and financial investments. And that's really what I wanted to talk about a little bit more. Somebody sent me an article yesterday, and I thought there was some really interesting information in it that is not just relevant really to the pickleball club, but to Newport Beach city as a whole. Uh, today, it boasts 4.8 million players. The participation rate has grown from 39% since 2019. The interesting thing is that the major growth is actually among younger players. So when we all die off, and most of us are sort of of certain age here, it's not going to die with us. There are new members coming along, and we're seeing that at the club, too. Major broadcast networks like CBS, Fox Sports, and the Tennis Channel are now airing pickleball matches. Uh, a, and the money is coming in. I was reading that the Milwaukee Buccaneers co-owner, co-owner Mark Lasry has made an investment in Major League Pickleball. And he said, when he was talking about it, I think you're going to be shocked, whereas it's five years from now. But what really struck me most of all was when I read something about what's going on down in Naples. Um, I think it's this week, it may have been last week, there was a U.S. Open Pickleball Championship. Almost 3,000 players, both amateur and pro, participated. The championship aired, or is going to air on CBS, in front of an estimated 25,000 tournament spectators. 40 sponsors have contributed, and more than $9 million has been, uh, generated for the local Naples economy. And the reason I think this is important is that when this, uh, club was first started, the intent always was to make it a tournament center. And I think some extraordinary first steps have been taken in that direction. As a friend of mine talked about just a moment ago, we are now attracting people to Newport Beach who stay in hotels, who eat in our restaurants, and who shop in our shops, as a result of these pickleball tournaments. So as I see it, as we look forward, which I think is the intent, we have an opportunity either to leverage what we have or to lose what we have. And if we want to leverage what we have, we have to, I think, continue to provide pickleball facilities for the tens of thousands, soon more than that, of voters and taxpayers who enjoy the sport in this city. Secondly, I think we've got a great opportunity to enhance, one more minute, to enhance the reputation of Newport Beach by having, being a pickleball tournament. And by bringing in all of these people, we're having them spend money here. And how bad that can that be for the fiscal economy of our city? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, council?
Yes.
My name is Mitch Jokins. Um, I'm a resident of Newport Beach. I live within a thousand feet of the club. Um, I also own 12 Corporate Plaza across the street here, so we're neighbors. Um, I, uh, was going to, uh, speak on behalf of one of my dear friends, John Rosen, but rather than go through this, I'd like to submit it, if possible.
Yes, that's fine. The city attorney can accept it.
Read it later at their, their convenience. But I do want to say that I really appreciate what you guys are going through. And, uh, I know that this is a, a really, really tough time and a trying issue, uh, at hand right now. And, um, I am very, very much in support of our club. Pickleball has changed my life. It really has. I mean, it's something that I look at, you know, physically now. I'm in the marketing business as well, and I do know what the revenue generated from the, you know, um, pickleball activities that take place and what is coming in the future, what that will mean to our community. And, uh, I want everybody to also consider that and look past what, what's going on now. But thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, uh, council members. I do represent the other 50% ownership of the tennis property. They are tenant-in-common owners. I just wanted to clarify, there is no LLC that owns the property. There's no managing member. Uh, they are all, uh, tenant-in-common owners of the property. I want to reassure the council members that I know my clients to be fair-minded folks, reasonable folks. There is no intention to remove or do away with the tennis club, racket club. They see the value that it provides to the community. Uh, there's no project on the table specifically that they're looking to get approved at this point in time. That was addressed by the council at the beginning of the meeting. That was addressed by the council at the beginning of the meeting. To answer Mr. O'Neill's question, my clients, after trying to resolve this matter, recognizing that the parties would benefit from some judicial decisions on their rights regarding the property, did initiate an arbitration on March 25th. They also initiated a corollary ancillary injunctive relief proceeding with the Orange County Superior Court on April 8th. Judicial declarations regarding the parties' rights and what can be done and who can make those decisions are being sought. What my clients are saying to the city is, we don't want to get you involved. This isn't your decision to make. We recognize that. This is a decision for the courts to make. We're taking this to the courts. We're hoping to sort these issues out. We're working through this process that we have. It doesn't seem to make sense to remove these units from the housing element update until we have answers about who gets to make these decisions, how they should proceed, right? All we're asking the city to do is to maintain the status quo. These units have been reserved for some time now. We have many disagreements. The owners have many disagreements. We have disagreements about how things have gone down, the record, communications, all of those things. This isn't obviously the forum to litigate those or say who's right or who's wrong. Those will all be worked out. But what I'd say is, all we're asking the city to do is to please just keep these in. We know that the state is requiring additional units. It's mandated. From our perspective, it doesn't seem to make sense for the city to cut its arm off and say, we're not going to have these units at the tennis property until it knows who has the right to make those decisions, what projects could potentially get done there, and when there's a clear need for these types of projects. Again, I want to reiterate, my clients have no intention of doing away with the pickleball court. I know it'd be hard for me to convince any of the folks in this room that are here of that. Maybe over time, we could, but we do have time to sort this out. No project is getting proposed tomorrow. That's not what this is about. What my clients are seeking to do is to preserve the status quo, keep those 350 units there until we know who has the ultimate right to make this decision, what project we could potentially get approved, and what our options might be to assist the city in meeting the state-mandated housing requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come forward.
I have a moment of another comment.
Let's let it be open for public comment, and let's finish the public comment. And then you can have one minute after.
Okay.
Yeah. Please come forward.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's Nancy Scarborough. My comments are more general to the housing element and the review by the state. I think that a lot of the people in this room have not had the opportunity to go through a lot of the public outreach that many of us have been through and may not realize that the 4,800 units that the city has been mandated by RENA will actually require a larger number of units to be built in Newport Beach. Developers very rarely can build 100% affordable projects. Of the 4,800, 2,400 have to be affordable. So if you do the math, you can come up with anything from 11,000 units to 25,000 units, depending on how you break that down in terms of affordable versus market rate. So the problem is a much bigger problem. And so I have some thoughts, some suggestions. One thing that we could do is we could study, the staff could help us study, and we could do some public outreach regarding the cities that have lawsuits against the state and HCD about the unreasonable number of units that all of us, every city in California, is having to deal with. That's something that we could have a lot more participation in. These people are very interested in that, and maybe we can generate some more interest. We've got a lot of people, we're stronger in numbers, so that would be one thing. The other thing we could do as a city would be to consider 100% affordable projects that could be supplemented, public partnerships. We have a surplus, the city has a surplus every year, seems like lately. Maybe we could dedicate portions of that to the purchase of land for some 100% affordable projects that reduces the market rate apartments that have to be built to make those affordable happen to a smaller number. So we could bring those numbers down from 25,000 or from 11,000, back down closer to 4,000. That's another thing. The surplus land, the surplus money could go to a trust, and I happen to know that there are people working on that right now. So that would be something. The other thing that we could bring up, and we could maybe leverage this, I know there's a lot of concern right now over fractional ownership. And fractional ownership does take away from our housing stock. So maybe it's a good time to be pointing that out to HCD, and maybe there's some extra momentum from that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Nicole Reynolds, and I have a cold, which is why I'm wearing a mask. But I didn't plan on being here, or I didn't plan on speaking. But I am a resident of Irvine Terrace, which nobody has mentioned today at all. I don't know if there's anybody else here that's a resident. And I'm concerned about the increased traffic. When Jamboree was closed for street construction these last few weeks, it has been insane going through the entrance of Irvine Terrace to Coast Highway. They've put in an extra stop sign. It didn't matter. I have never seen people speeding through. They ignore the stop sign. In the mornings, it's way backed up. So I'm really in favor of reducing these units as much as possible because I'm concerned with the increased traffic. Seems to me that this definitely would fall under green light. I understand the RENA issues, and I think Nancy mentioned some ways it could be addressed. Anyway, I just wanted to say that the residents of Irvine Terrace should know a little bit more about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And again, if you would like to speak on this item, now is a good time to come towards the front.
Hi, I'm Thomas Buckfeller. I want to talk to you about the tennis courts. My seventh-grade son has spent years training four or five hours a day with the goal and his dream of becoming a professional tennis player. If the tennis courts go, the academies have nowhere else to go. Big places nearby in Orange County have closed over the years. To do an academy, you need eight courts or more, and the kids need the academy to have the chance to train with the coaches, the time on the court, the time against other good players. And if there's several other kids like my son who are training so hard for years, every day, if those tennis courts go away, my son's dream will literally end. There is nowhere else to go. This doesn't just affect exercise and health. This is about opportunity for children that are working their butt off for years at this sport, but their dreams will end. There's no other place to go. So I beg you on behalf of my son, who's been working so hard, please don't let those tennis courts go away. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Any other speakers on this item? Then we'll go back to the parties. And please come forward now if you'd like to speak. Ma'am, please feel free to come forward still.
Dear member of councilmen and councilwoman, thank you so much for having this meeting, the opportunity to speak. I'm a member of Newport Beach Tennis Club and Pickleball. Ever since I started it last July 2021, I lost my weight. My weight went from close to 200 to now I'm 160, 165. My waist size went from, gosh, it's, I don't know, I'm 27 now, but I used to be 36. I was prediabetic. I had high blood pressure, and now that is gone. But aside from the health benefit of this activity, it's the people that you meet. Normally, when we live through our daily lives, and today we live in a very digital society, we do text, and we don't really meet new people. But through the avenues of pickleball, the sportsmanship, we meet new people, we build camaraderie. And what makes, and so many people have already spoken about why this Newport Beach Tennis Club and a pickleball club is so special is because Sean and the gentlemen and all many people, the directors, Abby, they have worked so hard to build the camaraderie and good atmosphere, atmosphere where people are included, not excluded. And it's not just a health benefit, as some of the members have already spoken. It's about a community, building a community and doing something together when we are living in a society of difficulties. And I do understand the challenges that the state is demanding. So I do understand that compromising is a very crucial part of it. But what makes, so some of the members have already spoken. What about other facilities? Why does it have to be here or this? Why can't we just then reduce, you know, half of it? Well, some of them have already spoken out. If it is, in a Newport Beach Tennis Club, we have about, I believe, 28 pickleball courts and a grand stadium where it accommodates over 1,500 pickleball members and tennis enthusiasts and kids who are really trying hard to become professionals. Other clubs, they don't have that kind of real estate. They can't accommodate that kind of membership. It's too crowded, they can't play. Whereas in Newport Beach, it accommodates that opportunity for people to come and then meet new people and challenge. So often, other tennis clubs, and I've been to many clubs because I travel quite a bit in different states through my work, and it's not so inclusive or welcoming. But this Newport Beach Tennis Club is welcoming, and it's very special. So in that sense, I really encourage council members to look at the uniqueness of this tennis court and membership. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I am new to the area. My name is John Leslie Brown, and I just want to say it's a pleasure to be able to have such a beautiful place with such great leadership as Newport Beach, to be able to raise your kids in in these times. And I second everything I just heard the other speaker say. If we could, if, I don't know the city councilman, and this is my first time at a city council meeting, but if you could join me, I'd love to give the citizens of Newport Beach a round of applause or even a moment of silence. You guys could just look stern-faced. Don't smile. They might think you're human. Come on, man. You know they think Zuckerbird's a robot. Please, keep your straight face. But just a stern face for the residents of Newport Beach for not letting this turn into San Francisco, no offense to our VP. We're in some historic times, and I have three issues I'd like to talk about as a new resident. One is housing. Two is rights. And the third is the Bryants. I'm gonna start with number three.
Aaron.
I'm sorry. My mom's name is Lejean Bryant, and I wanted her to grow up in a beautiful home her whole life. Is this my time right here? Okay.
Well, it's actually, it's time for you to speak on non-agenda items in a couple minutes.
All right. I'm out of order.
Yeah, but it's okay. Well, you come back in a couple, and we're all ears.
That's a round of applause from him, okay? You guys should like shun me and boo. That means he really loves you guys. That's how you do it in DC. All right, I apologize. So I'll have some time.
Yes, you will. You have three minutes when we're finished with this item. I think we're almost done.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other speakers on this specific item? And again, if you also want to speak after the next speaker, please come towards the front now.
I'm Paige Nichols, and my pickleball family, and you've heard the passion that we all have. I just wanted to bring up two points that I don't think have been brought up. And correct me if Newport has already looked at this option. In the city of Irvine, they consider apartment complexes that are already existing. So those are already up and running. And then what they do when they vacate, they assign so many units within an existing apartment complex that they can be designated as low-income. So I know that there are apartment buildings in Newport Beach that need renovation and need investors to go in and update them. Is that something that the city has considered? Existing apartment complexes that can be designated a certain percentage for low-income housing? I mean, I think all of us in Newport want the reputation of being inclusive and not exclusive. I don't think anyone's against additional housing for low-income or median income, but to take away something that is such an asset to the city when there are other alternatives, has that been looked at?
Well, I saw my head of staff, my staff have taken notes, but we're not typically responding directly, but you can talk to them after the item.
Okay.
It's an interesting idea. I have not heard that exact explanation for if that's done or not.
Yeah, so I know the city of Irvine does that. They have so many apartment complexes, and they're required to designate so many of those units for low-income housing. So that's the best of both worlds, right? We get to solve the problem, but we also get to keep the asset that we have. And then this last request is that I wanted to personally invite Noah Bloom to our pickleball club.
Are you speaking on this?
On housing.
Well, you spoke on this item already, and then you're going to speak on the non-agenda items. Are you here to talk about the RENA numbers?
That's those things.
Yes, correct.
I'm gonna get my calculator first. I apologize.
Okay. Okay. Any other speakers on this item? Yes, please come forward.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk. And well, I wasn't prepared. I don't have anything written, but I'm an educator, and I have the privilege to join the club after the COVID. And it's been a joy and a privilege to be there, part of the community, all of us that we are here. And as an educator, as a teacher, I have the privilege to be in the front row, you know, and I would like to talk on behalf of all the students and all the new generation that they're being, like, they are training on a daily basis in that club. I have the privilege, I'm a mom. We have like one daughter, she's 15 years old, and she just joined the club like two weeks ago. She didn't want to go. She's a teenager. And the coach is here, and literally, I can see the change, you know, when a kid, like I was saying, I'm an educator, when a kid is training in a daily basis, as a teacher, I can tell you the concentration, the ability to concentrate in class, the ability to be engaged with other students because they are not only learning to be disciplined, they are learning how to socialize in a healthy way. And well, I would like to be, like, everyone is saying, you consider to keep it. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Any other speakers on this specific item? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Ottilie Or, ma'am, are you coming forward? No, she's okay. Michelle, if you'd like one minute, and then I'll give opposing counsel one minute.
So truth and praying for reconciliation. Since I inherited my new managing owners, they've been adamant about eliminating the tennis club. So I have a recent letter dated January 25th to James Campbell, signed by two of my co-owners, Irv Chase and Brett Fierstein. And it basically, I'm gonna pass this out, it basically says, we're asking for 300 to 365 residential units and several tennis courts, two to be exact. And we have developers in San Diego, that's where the Fiersteins are from, who are ready to bring that to bring that project before the city." So it started out at seven stories, then it was six stories, then it was five stories. Started out at 500 units, and then it was 400 units. And Irv Chase testified under oath in an arbitration that there would be absolutely no opposition to eliminating the tennis club. And I think that you're seeing a lot of opposition, including the petitions. Can I hand this in?
Okay, thank you. I'll give you a minute thirty.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Again.
Jacob, let me make one, just one more point. We're, we have relocated a bunch of units into a place where they make some sense, where they're viable. Got Corey Kramer to buy into it. He's Eagle Ford Partners, our tenant at, at the golf club. And there's never been any controversy as to who the managing owner is. It's clear in the owner in common agreement, and it's clear in Judge Fromholz's ruling. Judge Fromholz famously said, "I get it, I get it. They want, the managing owner won't obey his co-owners." And that's what this comes down to. It comes down to a disagreement as to what's the highest and best use, what's about to be built is the highest and best use. To go back to square one is a fool's errand.
Oh, thank you. Two minutes.
Again, not looking to the city to get in the middle of this. However, to address some of Mr. O'Hill's comments directly, the council was just handed a letter. He said it was 300 to 200, 365 units. The letter says 200 to 365 units, not 300 to 365 units. The range is much larger than he just represented to the council. And it says several tennis courts. He made the representation to the council that it would be two. Nowhere in this document does it say two. He hasn't provided the council a document that shows a plan for two courts. That's because no such document exists. He talked about seven stories, six stories, five stories. He hasn't presented the council with any plan that's being proposed that had gone through those iterations. Again, these are not issues for the council to decide here today. All we're saying is, hold these units. Let us resolve these issues through the court, which is where they should be resolved. There's no downside in pulling them out right now. All you're doing is cutting out a potential project that could benefit the city. It could be that project doesn't get approved. Could be we don't have those rights, but it could be we do. And it makes no sense at this point to cut those out. And I would reiterate, my clients are not looking to remove this club. I know I'm not gonna win that argument today. I know I'm not gonna convince the folks in this room, but you all know there's no project pending to do that. You know that.
Yes, now, please hold your noise. Sorry, continue, counsel.
Yes, all we're trying to do is reserve these units so we can work out, sort out our disagreements. And when we figure out what can be done there, we can come back to you and present the best project. It makes no sense from our perspective other than to kill a potential project, which we haven't even figured out if we can get done or not. And I would submit to the council as well, there's no project on the table from Mr. O'Hill in terms of a operator who's coming in and willing to do what he says he'd like to do. No such proposal has ever been submitted to my clients from a hotel operator for a project of the property. Thank you, counsel, for your consideration.
Thank you so much. Okay, at this point, the public hearing component is closed, and we'll bring it back to the dice. I see a request to speak from Councilman O'Neil.
Yeah, so we've been, we've been working on this for a couple of years now, and the standard we've set up here is that if someone, if a property owner wants it in, it goes in. If the property owner doesn't want it on the list, it doesn't go on the list. And so I'm hearing from Mr. Jurgis that we recognize Mr. O'Hill's being the person, Mr. O'Hill being the person that can represent the ownership group. And I, I think it's worth asking the city attorney, you've had opportunity to review this. Do you agree?
Yes, so we took a look at the operating agreement. We've taken a look at the arbitration decisions, and Mr. O'Hill is the managing owner, and in our minds, from what we've seen so far, has the right to represent the interest of the owners. I know that they're litigating these issues and they may end up working those out in their private disputes, but at this point, that's, that's the decision or advice we give the council.
Yeah. I mean, we, we're not in the, we're not in the business of solving the ownership disputes up here, and, and it sounds like that's, it's a pretty serious ownership dispute. Appreciate the request, Mr. O'Hill, to have me be an arbitrator. I think that's very clever because I know how expensive arbitrators are, and I'd have to work for free. But I, I, look, I mean, you have until August to figure this one out. If you can't figure it out, then you can't figure it out. We, you know, we're gonna have to abide by our council's advice on this. And so, you know, it strikes me that if, if the, if it were moving up, it'd be easier for us to explain that to HCD than if we were trying to move it down later on down the road. I mean, like I said, y'all have until probably August to figure this one out, and there's plenty of ways with, in the law to figure out who has the right to, to do this, but we can't wait. I'm sorry, we can't wait until your arbitration and litigation is over because we have our own timelines and we have to abide by them. And so because we have our own timelines, if the, if there's a judicial ruling in between that, let it, let our council know, let our community development director know. But at this point, this seems like where we've, where we've landed is, is listening to our, to our city attorney on, on who can represent Golf Realty Fund LLC, or, or I guess, I mean, that's the listed owner, but whatever the actual ownership is. So at this time, seems prudent to move forward with this plan, and if something changes between now and August, let us know.
Are there any other requests to speak on this item? I'd like to thank those in the audience for being respectful and relatively brief, actually. Anything else you need from us, Simone?
No, it was good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll give you all a couple minutes to go and file out if you'd like, or you can stick around for the, the not as exciting stuff. And have a nice evening. Let's see. That poor gentleman wants to speak on the non-agenda items, so I might have to let him come back, but public comments on agenda or non-agenda items, please come forward. Sure, yeah, while, while Aaron gives a closed session report or announcement, yeah, we'll, we'll grab him. Mr. Hart, do you have a closed session announcement?
I do. So the city council will not be meeting regarding agenda item number 4A, which is the conference with labor negotiators regarding negotiations with the unions. But the city council will be meeting regarding, meeting with the city's real property negotiator regarding negotiations with Park Miller related to the property at 1201 Dow Street in Newport Beach, California. They'll also be meeting with the city council, the city's legal council regarding potential litigation against the city regarding one matter and the possible initiation of litigation regarding one matter. And finally, the council will be meeting regarding the city clerk's contract and instructing the labor negotiators related thereto. All is set forth under items 4B through E on the agenda. The city clerk will accuse herself from item 4E, given the potential impact on her finances. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Hart. Yes, yes, a comment on non-agenda items?
Thank you once again. My name is John Leslie Brown, and three things that I think is important for our future. I'm a political futurist, and the first issue is about sustainability. Inyo County has been giving water and providing water for all of California, so I say, how do we turn that? What if we could pass some type of, I'll just call it pork, that gives our citizens just locally for Newport, all these issues are just for Newport citizens I'm talking about, not the rest of LA, to have those PH9 balanced waters on our, not just our drinking water, but our showers? That way, in a couple of years, that can irrigate with our other water, especially consider that little crisis we had with that oil thing we won't mention, but so that we can decontaminate the fall effect for our local little Hiroshima and actually turn that into a profit center for our community later, not with the tax hike, but with the tax reduction. Maybe it's just for business owners, because I know a lot of people choose to move to Newport Beach because they wanna run their business with the most business-friendly area in California. That's number one. Number two, mental health is a, very important to deal with homelessness. And we don't wanna be like Long Beach in terms of messing up our port so that you can't, your kids can't see past the ships, but also, no diss to Long Beach, we love Snoop Dogg, but we're Martha Stewart. We love the edibles over here. We like to bake, we don't sew. So the, the, the point that I'm making with the mental health is, let's send the, let's have, let's focus on mental health in Newport with all of our medical facilities and HRC and all that. And I have, I'm at, in a nice area, and I have ample space. I just wanna just kinda do a pilot test of being able to have local citizens, if you have a son, a daughter, a niece or nephew that may be struggling with some type of mental health illness. I've happened to overcome bipolar issues. Some people have schizophrenia, some people have, what's the Tourette's? I kinda have a little bit of all of it when the stock market is down. The fact of the matter is, that way, we can just look to the future and say, how do we turn these negatives and transmute them into positives? And to avoid increasing homelessness, we wanna first look at what are the causes, and the causes is mental health, especially when we look at veterans. Now, there's a government program that allows for government funding for rehabilitation of veterans. Why don't we allow for mental health for veterans, specifically that niche, to be something that we focus on in the next, between now and the improvement period of the 2024, and see how we can customize an innovation center that's around STEAM, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we're now ready to convene a closed session. We will reconvene, yeah, at 6:15. 6:30 it is. Calling me in order for the, happen again. Calling me in order for the April 26, 2022 regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Avery has an excused absence.
Thank you. Mr. Hart, is there a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Maldon. There's no closed session report this evening.
Okay. At this time, we invite the invocation to be done by Pastor Drew Ross of Christ Lutheran Church in Costa Mesa.
Thank you all very much for the invitation to be here. Again, my name is Drew Ross and come from Costa Mesa, friendly neighbor of Newport Beach. I appreciate the invitation. Leadership requires two virtues that seem very simple until they become challenged, honesty and courage. All of you have earned the right to be here tonight by winning the trust of the people of Newport Beach. But along with that honor comes a duty of humility, integrity, and public service. So please let us settle our hearts for a moment of prayer. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of this city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us see humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us, and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. You have established the governing authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, we pray for this assembled council, asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid conflicting interests, a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, confidence in what is good and fitting, personal peace in their lives, and joy in their task. We pray for the agenda set before them tonight. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Newport Beach. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen, thank you. Counselor Dixon, would you please lead us in the pledge?
If you place your hand over your heart. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the public for which it stands, foundation on your gun.
Okay, Madam Clerk, notice to the public.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda
Thank you. Now is time for council announcements or reports from council members, committee activities, and the time for council members to request A1 items to place on the future agenda. Councilman O'Neil, do you have any announcements or reports?
I do not, thank you.
Counselman Duffield?
I do not.
I love this. Counselor Brenner, Dixon, sorry.
That's okay. Just very, two short announcements. One, the aviation committee met this last Monday. We continue to make small incremental step progress on, with conversations, meetings with the air carriers and their takeoff patterns, and fly quiet with the county, and talks with the FBOs on their updated construction plans. So no major, out of the ordinary concerns. Also, I was honored to attend, and the mayor was there also, the Orange County Crime Victims' Rights Rally hosted by the district attorney, and it's a reminder why our criminal justice system is so important, and there are victims to crimes that we can never forget. So I'm glad I was there to honor those who have experienced, the victims of crime have experienced severe trauma in their lives as survivors of crime. We never can forget. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Brenner?
Yes, I attended the mosquito and vector control meeting, and our numbers are still relatively low, but they did install, in Big Canyon Phase III, they installed a tube of some sort to drain the water off because that's the most prolific breeding area for mosquitoes in, maybe they said in the county, but it's really, and so the sooner we can get that project moved forward, it will be helpful because that was, that was really important to them, to get that area drained. So that was one thing, and we also attended the homeless, not task force, ad hoc committee meeting and got some amazing results from Natalie about what we're doing in the whole area of homelessness and the number of people we've housed, and the, there are some stories that- that are so, um, touching and, and really important for people in our community to hear that we're looking at doing some videos with people that are willing to do that, so that they can, there's a, a person that was homeless for, I think, twenty-two years at the, um, pier who is now housed, and he was a graduate just a few years after me from Corona Delmar High School, and he's been twenty-two years homeless down by the pier. So, we've got some other stories, we've got...
He was right there on the chair.
Yeah, with the guitar.
There's now my...
Yes, yes. And he hugged the policeman when, when they, um, helped him to get relocated, so, yeah, so it's, it's really, and there are other stories. We've got two women that are now housed in the, um, place on Nineteenth Street that is the low-income property, I can't remember what it is, but they go out and talk to our homeless people and try to convince them to let Natalie and Cynthia and the others help them. So, we, we've got some really important things going on that, um, and it, and it, and it, we need to find a better way to make sure that we let the community know how our efforts are helping, because it's really inspirational. Um, let's see, I just have two announcements. We have a compost giveaway happening Friday, April the twenty-ninth, from eight AM until supplies run out, and this is at Grand Hound Park. We had some, um, we had some people that didn't get the compost when we did it before, and it was pretty crowded, so we're doing another one, this is at Grand Hound Park, and, um, a lot of people from Oasis wanted composting for their gardens there, so this will be a convenient location for them. Um, also, free kitchen pills, pails for organic recycling are also available there. And, um, there was one other one that I didn't get a slide for, but, um, oh, this, this was for a tree planting that we did at Lincoln Elementary School. We had the, um, Board of Trustees from the school district, and we had our city park staff and our public works staff, and it was freezing that day. We were sitting out on the playground, and the kids were real troopers, they just, uh, muscled through it, but we got five trees planted on the Lincoln School property, and we also gave little trees to all the kids that were there, and a lot of the moms that were there, school trustees and I, that had had children in the past that received these trees, now know where they are planted in Newport, and we've seen those trees grow up for the last twenty years. So, it was, it's really a fun, a fun thing to participate in. And, um, I just wanted to add one more thing that tomorrow, uh, tomorrow night, Wednesday evening, at Sherman Gardens, is the Corona Delmar Residents Association Annual Meeting, which is open to anyone, and, um, Will will be there, and I will be there, and we'll be talking about a variety of things, so please come, it starts at five o'clock.
Great, thank you. Councilman Blom?
I have nothing, thank you.
A hero. Okay, I have some, I'm breaking my own rule here. Can we put the truck event up? We have an event called Touch a Truck, which unfortunately does not mean washing my truck, it means, um, instead, residents can touch a utility truck. Uh, Public Works Utilities Department would like to invite Newport Beach residents to, quote, "Touch a Truck" event on Saturday, May fourteenth, from nine AM to noon, the Balboa Pier parking lot. It will be hands-on opportunity to get up close to heavy trucks and equipment, learn how they use to keep our city clean and well-maintained. There'll be a trash truck, backhoe, loader, street sweeper, and more. There'll be more information, there'll also be information booths from our city's staff and contractors. The event will be a fun learning opportunity for children and families, and I encourage you to attend, and I'll be there with my son.
Yes, I bet he will.
Yeah, he wants to go, yeah. A Mayor's Water Challenge. So we're now in the final week of the National Mayor's Water Challenge for Water Conservation, sponsored by the Wieland Foundation. The Mayor's Challenge is a friendly competition each April between cities across the US who can, quote, "save the most water," or who's, sorry, who is, quote, "water-wise." Mayors nationwide are challenging the residents to conserve water, energy, and other natural resources on behalf of their city through an online pledge. As of today, Newport Beach has slipped down eighth place among other cities nationwide of similar size, so I'm, I'm losing sleep over this. We can be number one with your help. If you haven't done so already, please take the pledge today at mywaterpledge.com. The pledge takes less than a minute, and you'll automatically enter to win prizes. Last year, the challenge awarded more than fifty thousand dollars in prizes nearly three hundred residents in the US, and you also get the prizes dedicated to the nonprofit of your choice. The last day to take the pledge is April thirtieth. We have a scholarship deadline. Uh, as a reminder, the deadline for applying for city scholarships is Monday, May second, at five PM. College-bound seniors and transfer students can earn up to seven hundred dollars for educational expenses. The application is at newportbeachca.gov/scholarships. And the community grants deadline, another deadline coming up soon, Tuesday, May third, at five PM, for community program grants and special event grants. Grants are available to orgs that provide community programs available Newport Beach residents and those seeking financial support from Newport Bay, for Newport Beach-based events. For more information on online application, visit newportbeachca.gov/scholarships. Madam Clerk, please read the notice regarding public comments on the consent calendar.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through fourteen. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each of the items for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Councilman O'Neil, do you have, Councilman O'Neil, do you have any items to pull from consent calendar or conflicts to announce related one through fourteen?
None.
Councilman Duffield?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a conflict on items three and six for business interests.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon?
I have none.
Councilwoman Brenner?
None.
Mayor Proton Blom?
I have none.
And I have none, but I'd like to lodge a no vote on item number six. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion to move the balance of the consent calendar with the amended minutes. Um, item three with amended staff report and ordinance, item twelve with the amended MOV signature page, a recusal from Councilmember Duffield on three and six, and a no vote from Mayor Muldoon on number six. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Councilwoman Dixon. Any public comments on this?
Mayor Muldoon, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher, and I would like to comment on the much-troubled, uh, item number three, which is the attempt to present to you for introduction miscellaneous revisions to the harbor code. With the memo that was just mentioned, this is, I think, the fourth attempt to get a correct and clean ordinance before you. A couple of things that still trouble me about it are, number one, that the item that has been removed tonight from this was presented both to the Harbor Commission and to you as a non-substantive change, and when you actually read it and compare it to the current code, it took a regulation that currently applied only to anchoring boats in the open ocean and applied it to boats in the harbor. It is claimed that that was something already reiterating something in the fire code, but to me, when you change the meaning of something in the harbor code, that is a substantive change and should have been disclosed as that. And then the other thing that bothers me still is the introduction in this, never reviewed by the Harbor Commission, of the idea that revocation of permits by the harbor master will be non-appealable. That bothers me, because in the last revision of Title Seventeen, the harbor code, by the Harbor Commission, it was a central objective of theirs to simplify the then-convoluted appeal process, make it simple, consistent, understandable to everybody. So any decision made by the staff was to be appealable or called up to review to the Harbor Commission. Any decision by the Harbor Commission was to be appealable or called up to review to the city council. Very, very simple. Now, for reasons that are not clear, revocation of a sub-permit for a mooring is going to be made, non-appealable, which requires now amending the code, this is now section nine, page five of seven, to tell people that all the decisions of the city staff will be appealable or can be called up for review, except as otherwise provided herein, forcing people to read the entire code to see if their particular issue is something otherwise provided herein. And I think it would be especially troubling to the Harbor Commission, because they cannot even call up for review that decision by a staff person, and I think it was their wish to be able to do all of those. The claim is this is needed to make the revocation immediately effective, but it's, it is not Revocations are already immediately effective in the code as already written, and there's no reason that they couldn't be called up after the fact for appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on that item? Sir, would you just please explain the appeal process that you touched?
Yeah, so I think briefly, um, you know, we're dealing with a situation where people are coming in from out of town, and they're basically going to use a mooring for a temporary period of time, like very short period of time, and so, when, when discussing it, um, the revocation of the permit needs to be done, because they're only, maybe they're only here for a night or two nights, and having an appeals process associated with something that where they don't really have any type of interest beyond like a night or two, maybe like giving somebody an appeals process who's renting a hotel room and saying, well, can, you know, can I have somebody have a hearing on this? And, you know, they're there for a very brief period of time, makes a lot more sense to spell out in the code that the harbor director has, or harbor master has authority to basically revoke the permit and, and make sure that everyone understands that if they don't buy by the rules, that, that their ability to stay there for a short period of time will end.
For that, for that stay, but they can reinstate, they can say another time?
That's right. They can always come, come back and, uh, you know, apply for another permit, it's just basically ending that particular stay.
And if there was a discrepancy or a different feeling from the council on that decision made, we still have the ability to oversee that decision?
So it's not appealable, but, um, you know, the harbor master works for the, for the city manager, and so if there's a complaint filed, it would probably be handled internally, um, and take a look at it that way, as opposed to going through a whole costly appeals process related to something that's a very limited term.
So the, the remedy would be administrative response to the decision made by the staff member?
That's right.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, seeing no other public, public comments on this item, let's vote.
After reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for items three, four, five, and six. Ordinance twenty, twenty-two dash nine, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending sections one point twelve point twenty, seventeen point ten point sixty, seventeen point twenty-five point ten, seventeen point twenty-five point twenty, seventeen point forty point thirty, seventeen point forty-five point twenty, seventeen point sixty point forty, seventeen sixty-five point ten, and seventeen seventy point fifty of the Newport Beach Municipal Code pertaining to let, live aboards, onshore moorings, and miscellaneous provisions. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending subsection three point thirty-six point ten of the Newport Municipal Code to clarify the finding related to user services, subsection three point thirty-six point twenty, to update the definition of user services, amending Exhibit A of Section three point thirty-six point thirty, cost recovery percentages, to update the modification percentage for user services, and amending subsection three point thirty-six point thirty E to update waiver of fees for service. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eleven, amending Title Twenty-One, Local Coastal Program Implementation Plan of the Newport Beach Municipal Code and Adopting Local Coastal Program Amendment, LC twenty twenty dash one, Correcting Setback MAP Errors, and ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending Title Twenty-One of the Newport Beach Municipal Code and Adopting Local Coastal Program Amendment, LC twenty twenty dash two, Related to Tattoo Establishment Development Standards. We're going to do that one more time. If you can vote one more time, or raise your hand, either way. The motion carries unanimously six zero.
Excellent. Okay, now on to the public hearing. Or do we have, yeah, public comments, yeah, that's right. Public comments on non-agenda items, please come forward.
Uh, Mayor Muldoon, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. Uh, as you know, there's an election coming up quite soon, uh, especially for those who will be casting their ballots by mail, and frequently, when we have an election coming up on the city's website, opportunities to learn about the measures and candidates at the election are posted there. I haven't seen that for this particular election, which has a single ballot measure on it, so I just wanted to remind people, and was surprised I didn't hear this in the announcements tonight, at that event that we heard coming up tomorrow night at Sherman Gardens, there will be a public debate on Measure B at six PM at Sherman Gardens, and then two weeks from tomorrow, which would be Wednesday, May eleventh. I believe there will be a second public debate on the measure, taking place right here across the breezeway in the community room, and I think it's important for people to become informed about that measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, uh, my name is, um, Rosalinda Bermudas, um, so good evening, Mayor Muldoon and city council members. I'm here on behalf of Families Forward, and I just wanted to share my thanks and appreciation for our continued partnership. Our organization supports families experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness, and I was very excited to hear your comments, Councilmember Brenner, about the work that you are connecting with. We have a family that we assisted in Newport Beach with funding that we shared through our CDBG, uh, Community Development Block Grants, and this mom has three young children and is wheelchair-bound and was experiencing homelessness in her vehicle, and through this funding, we were able to not only secure appropriate housing for her that had spacious plan, um, housing plan, first floor, no steps, and the landlord was able to accommodate for, um, bathroom accommodations and add-ons. So, I just wanted to share with you all that we appreciate your support and that we support the action plan and continued, um, partnership with Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. God bless. Okay, seeing no other comments on non-agenda items, let's move on to this, to, uh, the public hearing component, resolution regarding Community Development Block Grants.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon, and Councilmember Simone George, as Community Development Director, and with me is Lauren Wooding Whitlinger, who is our real property administrator. Um, you do have an extensive, um, staff report with regards to the action plan. We do have a PowerPoint, I don't know if you'd like to get a PowerPoint or a presentation, or, or we could answer questions for you, it's up to you.
I think we had time to review it. If there are any questions, we can go to the question segment, unless there's, you want to give a synopsis.
Um, do you want to go, just go to the, just to the last, um, slide, Lauren? Just point it up. Right there, go ahead. And Lauren can go ahead and kind of cover that real quick.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, we have a proposed funding plan for you. The city anticipates receiving approximately three hundred ninety-one thousand dollars in this upcoming fiscal year, and we propose to, uh, max out the statutory limits that the grant has and allocate twelve thousand to Families Forward who provide, or excuse me, Fair Housing Foundation, who provides fair housing services to residents for no charge, um, and then the balance of that administrative, uh, bucket would be, um, sixty-six thousand dollars, and then, uh, again, maxing out the statutory limit of fifteen percent of the grant, the city proposes to allocate thirty thousand dollars to our senior home delivery meal program, and then sixteen thousand dollars to Families Forward, who, uh, shared an update with you, um, and then the balance of the public services, uh, allotment to the city's motel voucher program, and then the, the balance of the grant, uh, the city would be making a final payment for our Section one oh eight loan, um, and then allocating a hundred thousand dollars to, um, our anticipated, uh, costs at the homeless shelter in Costa Mesa, um, using fifty-five thousand dollars of funds that were unspent in previous fiscal years.
Great. Councilwoman Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I've been commenting, we've all been commenting on, on this, uh, annual report, and I'm really pleased to see more Newport Beach-based homeless services, uh, programs and capital projects, and on the capital side, just to jump over to that, too, I understand that... And on the capital side, just to jump over to that, too, I understand that's just we're going to be in reserve until we need, anticipating we will have some capital improvements that we will co-share with Costa Mesa, so that's smart, putting money there. And then I'll be happy, although I probably won't be here, I will not be here, but the, the program administration, we spend more on program administration than we do on the actual public services, but when we have, when the loan repayment, we'll have that money again to have, add more to the corpus of the funds that we can allocate for more projects. But I, I'm pleased to see the Newport Beach City Motel Voucher Program, and as the speaker said a moment ago, on Families Forward is going to homeless housing. So I, over the years, we've really shifted it to homeless needs, and so I'm very pleased about that. So thank you very much, and next year, there'll be more money to devote to that. So thank you. Well done.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions, just requests to speak from the dais? Okay, seeing none, let's go out to the public on this item. There's no obligation. You see, like...
Actually, I think they have to report public interest in this matter to the federal agency, so it's good to have some comment. As has been pointed out repeatedly, the long-going loan repayment, which is repaying a loan, as I understand, for infrastructure improvements that were made in Balboa Village some years ago, that finally will be paid off, so we'll have this additional money. Am I understanding the plan is in the future, not for this action plan? All of that money will be going towards the homeless shelter? Or do we have other ideas for what we will use it for next year? I'm thinking, in the past, we used some of it for ADA improvements, such as ramps that are intersections. Have we completed all of that? Or do we still have outstanding other improvements that we could use the money for besides the homeless shelter? Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers? Okay, seeing none, any requests to speak from the dais? Okay, the public hearing is closed. I'll move staff recommendation. Seconded by Councilwoman Dixon, let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously 6-0.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the announcement for motions for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
The motion to reconsider. Okay, seeing none, we are adjourned in memory of Merv, sorry, Mervyn Gruey. Councilwoman Dixon, please do the honor.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we adjourn in the memory of Mervyn Gruey, who passed away on April 14th at the age of 94. Merv's family moved to Newport Beach in 1933. He recalled working for his, oh, here he is. He recalled working for his uncle's ice manufacturing business on the Balboa Peninsula, driving an ice truck at just 14 years old. He attended Newport Elementary and Newport Harbor High, where he played on the football team. He served his country in the U.S. Merchant Marines during World War II. He met his future wife, Betty Jean, at the bowling alley inside the Balboa Pavilion. They were married for 68 years before her passing in 2018. For several years, Merv served our community as a volunteer firefighter. He applied to be a full-time city firefighter and was accepted, but decided to help the family business, which was a gas station at Newport Boulevard and 30th Street. After the gas station closed in the 1970s, Merv worked for Luco Electric, a marine electronics firm in Newport Mesa area. Merv finally retired in 2018 at the age of 91, after an injury forced him to stop working. Merv was well-known around town for his vintage 1964 VW Bug that he purchased in 1966 and drove for 55 years until selling it in 2021, when he was 93. For over 20 years, he was a fixture at his favorite breakfast spot, the Side Street Cafe in Costa Mesa on Newport Boulevard. This is where you'd find Merv enjoying conversations with his friends. He was revered as a local legend by all. His humble, engaging, and friendly personality and wit was always on display. Merv is survived by his two children, Philip and Kathy, along with five grandchildren and eight grand, great-grandchildren. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We are adjourned.